Good afternoon, I'm sorry for the interruption. I was listening to the Ways and Means Committee. They're rescinding their resolutions to distribute sales tax to all the towns and villages as we speak.
Wonderful.
I haven't heard what their, what their plans are. I don't think anybody has a plan yet, but they have essentially recommended rescinding their resolution in 2018 and then one in 2019, directing the treasurer to pay the sales tax revenues in the 2018 amount to the towns and villages. So that was a topic of conversation at the conference call on Saturday morning, so it's all official, and I was on their meeting. It started at 4:30, so just shut, shut that heating down so I can be at this one. Would that go? So, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good.
Petra, you're doing good. You guys are all awesome.
Yeah, right.
So as far as the agenda goes, the first thing I'd like to do, I see Steve is here, let's get right to the update on the water consolidation. I know we don't, I was expecting some correspondence or some information this week, but it doesn't seem like it's come through, so I'll just let Steve quickly give us an update on that process and where we are.
Yes, so the consolidation, we had received notice in March of the grant award, so we've now got the paperwork. Jeff's gonna get a resolution together that we can put that on the board agenda for May to accept the grant, and then we can file the paperwork. I did talk to Jeff. Once we get that done, you know, we'll probably set up a Zoom meeting with Hudson Russ and really lay out a, a schedule. And then if the board, you know, so wishes, we'll just continue moving it forward and try to get that taken care of. I think we, we still really wanna try to get this done. If there becomes a lot of infrastructure money available, if we can get the bonding in place, that'll really, we'll have a really good application for funding.
I agree, we need to continue to move with this as, as fast as we can for a couple of reasons. At some point, they may just absolutely require us to run 41 more sets of books, and now is not the time to have to deal with that. And I'd like to get that little gig off of our auditor's report that's been tussled me for 14 years and clean that up as well. Hopefully, we can get these things consolidated and then water be water and sewer be sewer and continue on with the other projects that are there. So, thank you, Steve. Anybody have any questions? Alright, the next thing is the, I'd like to kick around or at least start a conversation on the town hall renovation. Last I knew, we'd extended the bid dates for construction, service, and design. I don't know when that date was, I can't remember what it was, but it seems like it hasn't been on it. I think it's a priority.
We had, we had postponed it indefinitely, so we didn't set, we didn't set a particular date.
Okay, that's, that's probably a good thing, which brings up the next question. How, how do we move forward? And go from a previous 200 years of brick and mortar thinking for a workplace and how do we, you know, how, how do we move from what we have traditionally always done to something closer to what we're now really doing? Being in a required remote separated state and, and being more widespread across more communities and needing to find efficiencies and at the same time, by the sounds of what I heard from the county, there's going to be somewhere between five and nine million dollars in sales tax revenue lost, as well as a possible, I think he said nine million dollars in state aid lost at the, at the county level, so that's gonna put us in
It won't be good.
Former revenue streams that we've enjoyed in this, and it's gonna require us to think how we can try to, you know, reduce our overhead and operating costs and still provide the level of service that's attractive to commerce. Because right now commerce is carrying our community and a lot of Genesee County. Almost 80% of our workforce is still employed in essential services, and I know Ag is ramping up and have a number of businesses continue to expand. I think Dan said we've had over 20 building permit applications, so there's, there's still a lot of activity because we've, we've had, we've been blessed with a, with a, with a great blend of ag park and business park models that are attractive, and we need to continue that if we're going to be, if we're gonna be successful in this community. So I'm just opening up the conversation. And what is it now that we're really looking at? Because we have two unknowns. We don't know if we're ever gonna go back to what we traditionally did. And the other unknown is, we have no idea what the court systems are gonna do. And in talking with a couple of the other people in the community, county court, prosecutors, family court, they're all moving the cases that are absolutely necessary to be moved. So there is a method that the state is allowing attorneys and judges to use. But they haven't, they haven't privileged us with that information, and we're not sure that they're going to be doing any remote court facilities, but it seems as though there's very likely going to be some necessary consolidation and some remote access to all of these cases that have piled up over the last two or three months. So just right now, what are the positives to going back and relooking at traditional things? What are the negatives? What are the positives of what we're doing now and what are the negatives? And just generally get a, get a little discussion going. We're gonna start reopening this community in a couple of weeks, maybe sooner to some degree, so I need somebody, I need everybody's opinion, or I need everybody to be thinking and, and having this conversation, so don't hesitate to ask. I'll, I'll mute myself and just listen for a while.
Raise your hands.
Too lazy to do the thing. Is there, with the, some of the other communities, like we're doing some of the building and sharing some of the other communities, is there an option maybe to, would it be too hard or have an option, maybe have one of our building guys stationed at one of the towns that we are currently shared services with, if there is any unoccupied space remotely?
My answer to that is I talked to Dan Lang today, and they are, they're able to perform all of their functions by appointment, and they have not slowed down, and their, their only issue is you know, having, having worked through, there, there is going to be a schedule for them to come in and utilize the resources we have at the town hall now without any, without any need for any improvement at this time. So the face-to-face meetings are done at a distance, but they've been doing all of their work as they have in the past. The only thing that hasn't been as available to the public at large is the walk-ins who come up to the counter and ask if anybody's in and having a face-to-face conversation or ask questions of them, but they have been responding to all of the phone calls and meeting those people and making appointments to meet those people one-on-one and doing it through conference calls and things like that. So there hasn't been a slowdown, and there's, there's no need for them, apparently right now, and Dan will, Dan Lang will be filling me in more before the end of, of the week. There was a schedule that's gonna work for them for the foreseeable future that will not require any additional footprint in our building.
Nice, nice.
I almost wonder, I mean, should we look at, you know, redoing one of the office spaces, more like cubicles with temporary setups where people can come in and go out? Is that, I mean, you guys understand the daily operations better than, than us who aren't there every day. Is that something would be beneficial? I'll take that to no.
Okay, I am unmuted. Yeah, it depends on how many are in here, but yes, there needs to be some kind of more privacy if we are gonna get anywhere back to more people being in the office.
I'm thinking just more universal workspaces, not necessarily somebody's desk, you know, where you come in, you drop your laptop down and you, you know, you do what you have to do.
So there's separation as far as noise and that kind of?
Yeah, you know, I, just, I'm thinking, you know, like maybe three cubicles along the wall that are just dedicated workstations, not actually somebody's. And again, I don't know if that makes sense, if people that come in need that dedicated space, or if we've got people that, you know, are gonna be in the office a few days but don't need to be in the same office every day, if that makes
Gotcha.
Maybe Monday, Wednesday, and Friday it's somebody's space, Tuesday and Thursday it's somebody else's space, just thinking aloud.
I like that idea, Chad.
Yeah, I don't know if it's practical, I just, that's, that's more of a modern philosophy is you don't really have a desk, there's a workspace, and you may be here, you may be in A today, you may be in B tomorrow, depending on who's in the office.
I think it's a start. I like the idea.
Okay, I have a question. So what about the court? Like if we're, if we're gonna keep doing remote court cases? If that continues to happen and we want to bring some of the staff back, could we use the courtroom and maybe divide some space up in there? Is that possible?
Well, that's the question. We don't know what the, what the future of the court is. It could go from anywhere to going back to everything that we've done in the past, which has been completely inadequate and, and obviously needs a several million dollar makeover to be adequate for our needs, based on the case load. Two, there's only gonna be one court in the county, or somewhere in between where there may be four regional courts in the county. Those are the unknowns, and we don't, we, we don't have to find a solution for this this week or next week. We, we feel as though we have a relatively good plan for the clerk's office. Teresa has worked on how to, how to provide the next level of service and maintain separation and, and and, and do that in the clerk's office. I haven't heard from Rhonda that she needs additional access or more space for any of her staff, and we can reaffirm that, but they all seem to be firmly ensconced, working from wherever they are and absolutely getting the job done. So that comes back to engineering, water, sewer, clerk's office, having the space there and having it be adequate to our needs without having any use of the court facility other than a historian once a week, so. I know that's not an answer, but it is certainly going to depend on what the future of the courts is. That's the biggest unknown right now for us in that facility.
Yeah, and they're not saying anything either.
Maybe, and I agree, I think everything has to kind of be reimagined, and not knowing what's gonna come down from the state for future rules, regulations. You know, it may make sense for the, each of the departments to kind of come up with their, maybe call it a restarting plan, and, you know, each department kind of evaluate and provide for the board their thoughts on, you know, how things have worked so far remotely versus, you know, their specific needs to be at town facilities and when. I think if maybe we can all the different departments can compile that information for the board, I think that might be a good start to look to see what direction we had in, in kind of reimagining this, you know, new, new type of town hall. The other information that we don't, you know, if, if we were to look at expansion, most likely we would have to make it much, much larger if we really wanted to operate the way we currently have been in the past. With the distancing requirements, you know, we're hearing it from, you know, the state ed department and other departments across the state. So I think that it's something that we're really gotta look to do it a different way. So just a suggestion, maybe if the departments can compile information for the board to, to review and then, you know, figure out, you know, a committee structure from there possibly. Greg got a call from the governor.
Hey guys, remember to use your yellow hands like Dan is right now.
Oh, I can't use my regular hand?
No, because it's easier for me to see the yellow pop up than to watch for people's hands.
Okay, which one is it? Is it that one or?
Whatever one you want, Steve.
Okay, sorry.
But either one. No, no, that's okay, because I, I just gotta remind everyone to, to do that. It's just easier for me.
How do you take them off of there?
I'm muting you.
So the courts are officially closed to June 1st, is that?
June 1st? Yeah.
Okay.
At the moment, he keep, the governor changes his mind every time he comes on television. He's got something else different. Now he wants to run schools remotely, which people are freaking out about. I think it's ridiculous.
Nobody's gonna talk?
Chance got something to talk about, we got
I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I don't know what was next on the list.
I'll, I'll put it right in front of you right now. Put it right in front of you.
What are you looking for?
Agenda, I got it right here. Oh, Greg's back, he can talk to you on it.
Sorry, I apologize. What was the question?
Dan, Dan said he didn't have the agenda in front of him. Here it is. Oh boy.
So how, how do we wanna leave this? We wanna have a memo go out to the department heads then and ask for what they're likely gonna need?
I think that would be a good start.
Does anybody know if Mike Cleveland is back in the United States yet?
As far as I know, he is.
Yes, he is back. He's been back a month.
Okay. We'll have to probably, we should probably set up a staff meeting of some kind and, and chat this around at a staff meeting, Teresa, just to get everybody on the staff on the same page as to what we're looking for, and then the department heads can, can, can start that process.
Okay.
It's gonna be hard to get some people to embrace coming back to the office where they can't work, stuck in a closet, when, you know, they're able to do everything that they need to do from where they're set up now. I guess I just take a poll of who's here. Is there been any apprehension or any, any concerns that, you know, this is getting old and stale, and we need to do something quick to get everybody back in our footprint, or is everybody comfortable right now the way things are? Able to continue for a few more months until we see how this thing plays out? Teresa, how are you?
I think it work, it's been working out. The only thing is, you know, people coming up to the window. I, I think if, once we're cleared to do that part of it as a phase with the drive-up, but then go from there.
I, I think it's working well. The only thing is, I'd hate to see it to continue forever. I, I guess I, I miss the interaction with everybody. So I'm hoping someday we can get back to what, like we used to.
Well, we all hope for that, but it, it's, it's obvious that if this happened to us this time in the last six weeks, it's likely something very similar is gonna happen to us again, and we need to plan for that instead of what we've always planned for in the past. I'm, I'm pretty happy and grateful. If there is a positive side to this entire episode, it's that this happened before we spent $6 million on a facility and couldn't use it.
Definitely. So what is the, what is the word you're thinking from opening up the county or our region? Any words from the county on that, Greg?
Well, the, the county is following the guidelines of New York State. Bob Duffy is the task force manager for the Finger Lakes. In the daily reports that I send to everybody, if you read through that, it's gonna give you all of the information to keep you current. But the high spots are, we're in the Finger Lakes, there has to be seven metrics that are met before we can reopen this phase.
Well, we already meet six of them, right?
We've gotta meet all seven, and right now we have five out of seven, and what we're short of are available people to track positive cases, and I think there was test kits. So I think there's a couple of things, and as soon as those things are, well then, they're going to allow the first phase of construction, and we can start to reopen our interaction, and it's really gonna be up to the local communities how they wanna deal with their, you know, their, their staff and how they're gonna open up the business and that, and we can modify that as long as our safety thresholds are met. And my concern is that we, we don't have any non-essential people in this township. I mean, in this employ, everybody that's employed here is, is, is essential, or, or they wouldn't be working here. But we have to guard and take every precaution that we don't lose any staff members to this, and the distancing and the separation is gonna be a big part of that, as well as more information coming from the CDC and the other agencies that are tracking the spread and better identifying how this stuff goes. So we have to see a continued reduction in cases and a continued reduction in actives versus recovers. We have to maintain a percentage of a certain percentage of beds available for COVID-19 people in our healthcare. There's a long list of things that we have to have. We're not too far away. There's four regions out of all the regions in the state that are two away from being able to go to phase one, and I expect those all to be met in the next 10 days. I would, I would be very surprised if it takes more than 10 days for the Finger Lakes to be ready to reopen some of these phases and, and, and get going on getting some of the economy moving. The, the more difficult issue is the schools not considering opening until possibly next fall is leaving a lot of employable people who would be able to go back to work without daycare. That is gonna be a huge issue for a number of people who can, you know, work remotely and and they're able to stay home with their families and be safe, but if they're able to go back to work and your boss is calling to come back, there's nobody to watch the kids in a lot of cases, and that's gonna be something that, it's gonna be a, a real challenge. Not just for us, but for the region, and I think I, I can't imagine it must be like in the the higher employment sectors when factories start calling all their workers back and and the people have to say, no, I gotta watch my kids because I don't have a babysitter. So I'm not sure how that's all gonna play out. But we're in for a longer ride than just two weeks, and then we're gonna go back in one step, but we need to think about, you know, how quickly or how soon or how soon we're able to go through the, and get the drive-up window going, and when everybody's gonna be comfortable with that. There's no emergency, there's no rush, but that's gonna be entirely up to us to do, and and as long as we have an approval, then I think we're, we would be good to go with at least that phase of it and the rest of the operations. As I said, after we have a staff meeting, as far as the rest of operations, no one's expressing an urgency to come back in because they can't get anything done from, from where they are. I think it's been working out well enough for everybody. Continue to be productive and get the business of the town done and not overcrow the facility. Any other thoughts or comments? Sandy looks happy.
I am, I'm always happy.
Well, if there's no further comments or questions.
Greg, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. I took part in a Zoom meeting today for, with some of the state officials for the Ellicott Trail, and I had a Zoom meeting for work, so I missed the first half hour or so, but long story short, they reached out to us. They've got some marketing money, and they've also looking long-term to try and connect different trails, so it's been a good contact that kind of came through the Chamber of Commerce. Felipe, Kelly from the Chamber, and Paul from the County were all involved, and it looks like we're gonna get a piece in a five-county brochure that just kind of highlights the trail. I've also talked to Kelly about locally when things start opening. She has no idea what kind of money she's gonna have from the state when they open back up, but we are looking at maybe doing a local map as well, just to highlight different things you can do along the trail. So it's, it's kind of cool. It won't, I don't think, it may cost us a little resource or something, but that's about it.
Well, thank you, that
Go ahead, Danny.
Everything, everything associated with that Ellicott Trail just seems to bring a positive note with it. It just seems to be, I would never have guessed it would be as well-used. And timing is everything, but it has been, it has been very popular. I know the east end of Adavia has seen more foot track in it, there's more people walking around with ice cream cones on these things that you cannot see in a long time.
Yeah.
And I can see a lot of heads walking around, a lot of people walking around the county park that I think are new to that. I just, it's, west end is really busy, east end is really busy. Eugene Jankowski called me Saturday and Sunday, we were talking, and he and his wife had gone, and he said the center of it is still a little stark, but that they're working on the signage, and hopefully that'll get approved once things start opening up and there's some attractions there. But it's beyond my expectations already to see how well-used it is. So, that's all good news, Chad, thank you.
Chad, did they ask, or did they give you any kind of an amount for marketing, money-wise, what we might get?
No, I mean, we're, we're kind of jumping on a moving ship here because they had started it and caught wind of, of ours, and we, I just supplied some basic information, but it sounds like Felipe and Kelly at the Chamber are gonna take the lead and, you know, certainly will reach out to us if they need anything. So I don't know what the dollar amount is, and again, they may have covered that early on. I'll see if I can catch up with somebody and find out, but I reiterate what Greg said, anybody I've talked to, even and find out. But I reiterate what Greg said, anybody I've talked to, even Kelly, when she called me from the chamber, said she hadn't been on it yet, but had heard from a ton of people. I had, I put something on Facebook, had a couple of calls, people asking me about it. Again, I, we're looking at, I thought this is going to be great, but I really thought we had a small percent of the population that would use it. I just can't believe the amount of people, different walks of life and ages and everything, families, seniors, you know, old business, new business.
It's the time, it's what's happening in our life right now, right?
I don't disagree.
I mean, everybody wants to get out. They're sick of being in the house. They're like, this is a safe place. We can go, we can distance. I mean, it came at a, I want to say a perfect time, but I mean, it really did. It's helping.
Greg said a timing is everything.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, we really haven't even announced that it's open yet, which is fantastic. So I, yeah, it is. I, I am very proud to have been associated with that. It's, it's really neat.
Anything else? Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for the time you're spending practicing these meetings and keeping yourself informed. I know you're all overwhelmed, as I am, with a number of emails and a number of pages in each email and the updates and trying to, trying to stay informed. I just want to thank all of you for supporting this organization to the degree that has allowed us to, to attract and maintain the staff that we have working for the community. They're all a bunch of superstars and I have to say, it's been, this is, we're in our seventh, close to our seventh week of dealing with this thing. And I, I wanted to ask this question. Has any one of you had a call or a complaint about anything related to the town of Batavia operations or being dissatisfied with, with any of the services or any of the things provided? And I think again, that's very telling because people are often slow to compliment someone, but they're quick to pitch. And I haven't heard a complaint since this entire thing started. That is a, that is an unbelievable reflection of how well the staff in this community has performed their duties without complaint. And I mean, there hasn't been any complaining from the staff and there hasn't been any complaining from the, from the people that they serve. And I am just so, so overwhelmed by that, that I'm just pleased to have all of you and, and and be able to work with you and continue to move this forward. So thank you again from the bottom of my heart. It's very, very important to have a group and all of your perspectives and I can't thank you enough. And with that, have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Greg.
You too.
Have a good night.
You too. Night.
Bye-bye.
There you go. Good night. 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 Bye. Goodbye Greg, goodbye Dan, goodbye Steve.
Bye.